Good evening, everyone. Six o'clock, so it means it's time for the September 2020 Beaver Creek City Planning Commission meeting. We are observing social distancing tonight, so if you are out in the hallway or standing nearby, please try to keep yourself separate so that we don't get Green County in Level Four. We just as soon be as disease-free as possible. With that underway, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Lopdis.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Self.
Here. And just so you all will know, we have a new member of Planning Commission tonight. That's Drew Ayers. Raise your hand, Drew. He's new, so be nice to him. Don't beat up on him too much tonight. Agenda. Any additions, corrections, changes before we get underway?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Actually, on the agenda, the item under 5B has been withdrawn, the conditional use, so I'd like to strike that from the agenda.
Okay, that would be PUD 88-3?
Correct.
Okay.
No, it just was through.
Yeah, so when you do the motion to approve, just approve it with that deletion of item B.
Approve the agenda with the deletion.
Yeah. Everything else is still on. Okay. So, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as written with the deletion of item 5B on tonight's document.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I've got a motion and a second. We'll do that by general consensus.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, minutes from last month. Any additions, corrections, changes? We all good? Need a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the last stated meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I second.
And I have a second, and we'll do that by general consensus. I'm sorry?
Because our new member went abstaining.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you probably should have abstained since you were here.
That works.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got to keep this on the up and up.
Right.
Okay, the rest of you, gentlemen.
Yes.
By, okay. We have then two public hearings and a subdivision left for this evening, and without further ado, the first one is PC 20-10.
This is case number PC 20-10 for the purpose of addressing an amendment to the City of Beaver Creek Land Use Plan. The proposal consists of amending the land use plan designation for 27.18 acres of land located on the south side of New Germany Traybine Road, east of the golf course from low-density single-family residential to medium-density residential.
Thank you. Before we go through the public hearing, just to give everyone a heads-up, first of all, we'll have a presentation from the, from staff. Then we'll have a present, there's no one from, oh, that's right, it's been a while since we've done a land use plan, folks. We'll have a presentation from staff, then we will open this up as a public hearing. You get three minutes, and we'll time you. Everybody will get a chance. If you want to speak, you'll get a chance to speak. All I would ask is limit your remarks to three minutes, and also, if you have already heard what you were going to bring up, said by somebody else, please let, let the first presentation of that particular item stand.
And, Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself to avoid any potential conflict in this particular matter.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the case you have before you is PC 20-10, a land use plan amendment. This request is to modify the existing land use plan by changing the classification of VPA number 17, actually, the northeastern portion of VPA 17, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The acreage in question this evening is on the south side of New Germany Traybine, just to the east of the golf course and the single-family residential that's located south of the golf course. Seen here is the acreage in question. Again, it's vacant land right now, and it is classified as low-density residential on the land use plan. One thing that the requestee that brought to us a month or so, a few months ago, is should this move forward, they're all, this area in green is actually in the township, and they'd be looking to annex that to make the total acreage 30-acre project, and look to do the entire 30 acreage as part of one project. The area, again, is this 28 acres here. It's just to the east of medium-density residential, it's single-family, but it's 3.09 dwelling units an acre at Woodlands Section 10, and then Woodlands Section 9 is low-density residential, and then you have medium-density residential on the north side. So, to the north, to the immediate west, is medium-density residential, and you have medium-density residential all along the north side of New Germany Traybine Road. This property was actually rezoned, and there was several phases with the entire 400-plus acre Canterbury Trails PUD. The portion that we're discussing this evening is a combination of Phase 9 and Phase 10, or G and G1. When this was rezoned in 1995, G1, or G up on the north end was, it was stipulated in the zoning that it was for multifamily only, and was allowed up to six dwelling units an acre. And then G1, which is the southern portion, which is just to the east of the existing single-family, the 20.8 acres was allowed up to three dwelling units an acre. So overall, in a combination of the two, they're allowed up to 97 units, and that density, when you're looking at the entire 26, 27 acres, is 3.6-plus dwelling units an acre, which is technically medium-density right now. So what we're looking to do here is amend the land use plan so that in the future, should a zoning, rezoning request come forward, they have the ability to zone that up to six dwelling units an acre for the entire roughly 30 acres when you include the township. And just wanted to go through the process a little bit. We're here this evening at the very beginning of a land use plan amendment. It's a three-hearing event. I mean, it takes three public hearings, one being at the Planning Commission, which we're here. Should Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval, then it would move on to City Council, which they have a first reading and then a second reading, and public input's allowed at the first reading, and then the second reading is the public hearing and the decision for the, that portion of the land use plan amendment. Now, if that were to be passed, then we would go to the rezoning if they wanted to do anything other than what the zoning is allowed currently, which is the six acres to the north, or six dwelling units an acre on the north part and the three dwelling units an acre on the south part. A PUD amendment or rezoning would also require the three meetings, one Planning Commission making a recommendation, and two City Council. And at that phase, we would list specific uses and be able to add conditions and specific densities on specific portions of the land, so we could, you require a higher density up front and a lower density in the rear when it gets to abutting the single-family portion to the south. And then if that were to be passed, then we would go to specific site plan, and that's one Planning Commission and one City Council. And all eight of these meetings allow public input. And if we got to the specific site plan stage, that's when we'd be looking at site plan, you know, the actual layout of any potential buildings, the architectural elevations of those buildings, you know, how the streets are laid out, where the connections would be, or where the, where the access points out on the New Germany Traybine would be, and landscaping and screening and buffers. That's what you would establish at that stage. Now, there is an opportunity to establish buffers at the zoning amendment stage, or the PUD amendment stage as well, but typically, we have those included at the specific site plan stage. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, and we're recommending approval of that because in order for them to do anything, they would have to go through a PUD amendment or rezoning. If they were going to do anything above and beyond the six acre, six dwelling units an acre up front and the three dwelling units an acre in the back, we would have the opportunity to go through rezoning and distribute the future buildings so that the densities are more dense up front, away from the, any of the existing neighborhood, and then lower density in the rear. And that's something we can't really do at the land use plan stage, but we could do at the, at any zoning amendment stage. So, again, staff's recommending approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following our public hearing.
Just a quick clarification. When you, could you go back to the flow chart? Tonight's meeting, whether Planning Commission either approves or disapproves, it still goes on to council, is that correct?
Not necessarily. You know, there's no, there's no application that we would be obligated to move forward, so.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure of that.
If it did, if there was no, if there was a recommendation of disapproval, then, you know, there's no requirement to go to Plan, City Council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've heard from staff, and now it's time to open the public hearing. I'll remind you again, please, three minutes. We want to be here no longer than necessary, so limit yourself to three minutes. If you would come up, give us your name and address, speak your piece, and then if you would, if you have, if you're lucky enough to have one of the seats in here, give it up to someone else so they can come in and listen also. So, who wants to be first? Don't be shy, step right on up.
Let's keep this on. Okay. Hello, my name's Eric Wietrich. I live at 2704 Wyndham Drive in the affected neighborhood, Woodlands of Canterbury Trails. I am, I've been elected the HOA president, so. Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I have come out here in opposition to the proposal for the land, for the land use change plan in PC 2010. We moved into the area with the expectation that we were, thought we were rural enough that it would, we would just have single-family homes. So we moved in with that expectation, and we just, I just don't see any compelling reason to make this radical change to the plans that are set in place. So, I mean, to be clear, I understand, we all, we understand that it eventually would be developed, but the expectation was single-family homes per the existing land use plan. Our community, we've had, once we, this, we got the notices, everybody in our neighborhood was going like, what the heck? Emails were going back and forth, we had a meeting. There's a lot of concern about this. We, you know, we've, we've got kind of a closed-knit community, and, and once again, we, we expect to have new neighbors. I mean, that was, that was the expectation all along. But, once, once this is, we go with apartments, it's like, what's next? I mean, it's, it's like, I'm, I just have a fear that once the ball is rolling on this, that inertia is going to be against us, and we're, and we're just afraid that something else is going to come. Maybe today, it's low-density, well, we need, we need more, we need to up the density a little bit. Right now, with interest rates the way they are, I mean, single-family units are selling very well right now, so. Okay. Okay, yeah. Well, that's, that's about all I have, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is James McKinney. I live at 2714 Wyndham Drive, also in the Woodlands of Canterbury Trails subdivision. And I guess most of my comments tonight are more questions than they are comments or feedback, and rather than appeal to ethos, I'm going to try more from a logo standpoint. The original Planning Commission, when they approved these low-density housing, and I would ask for a point of clarification from the staff, when you refer to six dwelling units and three dwelling units, based on the existing structures that are around the golf course, I would interpret that as six dwelling units would be the type of condos that are currently surround the golf course, and the three dwelling units would be the single-family houses. And I would ask for an interpretation of, was that the original Planning Commission's intent was to develop those as condominiums and single-family houses? But with that, let me just say, my first question is, what's the plan? I see a request for approval of this change, but I don't see a plan associated with that request that would address such things as basically an independent study on the effects of what this approval would have on things like property values around the golf course, the traffic on New Germany Traybine, the walking traffic on the golf course and then the neighborhoods surrounding the golf course, what would be the impact on the schools if they do go to an apartment-type complex, both on the quality and the costs to the school district, and then what's the impact on the water and the sewage, and then the police and the fire services? So again, I would just end my comments by saying, I see this as a request for an approval, but I don't see any information being distributed as to what's the plan associated with this request for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody is being really polite, thank you.
Well, we can't say what's going to happen at the end of the line, so we still have a long night, is what I'll tell you. So, my name is, let me start my timer here, make sure we're on the same page.
We're timing, you don't worry.
Oh, are you? Okay, so I've officially started, that was just a joke to break the ice there. All right, so my name is Quincy Hearn, I live at 2472 Forest Oaks Drive. I'm the current Vice President of Woodlands of Canterbury Trails Homeowner Association. Obviously, you can tell by the amount of folks that are here tonight, more than probably what you're accustomed to, is that there is a large amount of opposition to this plan. It's not just because we don't like the idea. I think Eric mentioned that eventually, we all knew that eventually this area would be developed. I think that we can accept that. But again, the area to be developed under the current plans. So, just recently, I know that you guys just modified your overall plan, amended your overall plan to change in, earlier in 2020. Looking at VP 17, just as an example, your own language in your amendment made the ability to change that zoning difficult. Verbatim, this is what it says. At first, it said, "VPA 17 is designated for low-density residential development." That's what you said. The amendment says, "In addition, development in this VPA should be similar in scale and design to newer homes that have been constructed in the areas immediately adjacent to the golf course." Guess whose home those are? Those are our homes. Those are all the other new homes in VPA 17. So by, again, looking at all the data that's been provided, everything on your website, we researched extensively to find something that would constitute you going for with approving this amendment. There was absolutely nothing, could not find anything. And what you'll find here is a bunch of well-educated individuals that are very diligent, diligent and very thorough in their research. Not lawyers, maybe we got a few here, I don't know, but I can tell you, we have doctors, we have engineers, we have lawyers, we have contracting professionals. So a very diverse array of individuals that went all in on this to see if we could find other information that would contradict what we found. There was absolutely nothing. So, at the end of this, this session, if there's anything other than a disapproval, then I would, I would say that, I would say, show your cards, because we couldn't find it, could not find it, and we looked, we looked very hard, we made phone calls. Again, unfortunately, I don't have a lot of, oh, I only have 38 seconds left. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of time, but just as the other individual mentioned, there are other things that have not been taken into consideration. The traffic, the Kugler Wetland Preserve that's only .6 miles away, did you know that? I did. 6.6 miles away, amongst other things. So again, even with the data that was provided in this proposal, there was nothing, I mean nothing, that was there to support the argument. Everything from the logic of this project creating, let's see, make sure I got my words right here, an oversaturation, it said they don't think it would create an oversaturation in the area, that's laughable at best. 181 units, two cars, okay, I'm off.
I'm sure somebody will take, pick up where you took off.
I don't know, I got a lot, I got a ball of fire here, you sure? I don't know. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Sorry, you kept telling me smiling. My name's Amanda Bales. I live at 2391 Forest Oaks Drive here in Beaver Creek, and I really just want to come to you today. First of all, I want to thank you for hearing all of our comments, and I'd like to share with you that I am opposed to this. My husband and I, who are the original homeowners in the subdivision, and when we built our home more than 15 years ago, we were made aware of very strict set of covenants. These were mandated by our homeowners association. In the last 15 years, our covenants have not been lessened, and the homeowners association takes great pride to ensure these requirements are met by all homeowners, securing our property value, and making sure our community is a great place to live. I'm concerned this amendment will not only change the character of the neighborhood, it will also lead to more people, traffic, safety issues, and noise. These are, these factors are especially concerning to me because I have young children, and their safety is my top priority, as I'm sure you're, as I'm sure it is to you as well. So I would really like this board to reevaluate the consideration of this proposal, to pass no, so it stops here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been taking time at all.
Can I give my three minutes to Wincy, the gentleman?
I'm sorry?
I would like to give my three minutes to Wincy, I think. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah, that's fine. I should have mentioned, and I apologize, that if you would like to donate your three minutes to someone else who is going great guns, and you want to hear the rest of what they have to say, that's fine, but you need to come up and tell us that. So, my apologies, continue. You've got another three minutes.
Great. I see you again. Seems like we were just here.
Been a long time.
Absolutely. So, continuing to dissect the proposal that was presented toward you, it talked about the oversaturation. There was no, and it mentioned a market analysis report. There was no market analysis report provided. Did you get a copy of that? I did not. Did you? That's a question. It said, according to that market analysis report, there was not a belief that oversaturation would happen.
Staff, did we get something like that?
Did not. To my point, I didn't get a copy either, to even analyze the source of that information and/or documentation to see what this market analysis report said. So again, with respect to making an informed decision with information and data, again, I don't even believe that we have the facts. So you have to start with at least the facts versus assertions. I think we can all agree with that, correct? So going back to what another individual was talking about was the significant degradation just of the Woodlands. So just listen to that name, the Woodlands. The Woodlands is designed of Canterbury Trails, it sounds picturesque. Believe me, if you ever driven through our neighborhood, it is. Surrounded by a golf course, trees, a lot of things of those natures. Picture this, dropping in 181 units in the back of all that, 181, up to 181 units. So take the cars, take the traffic, right? Take the noise pollution, and that's exacerbated tenfold of what we have now, and it takes away from the Woodlands actually being the Woodlands. And again, if you've ever been in a noisy neighborhood, you know that that can cause issues with respect to your quality of living. All of us bought homes there with the expectation is that that quality of life, that quality of living would maintain throughout our duration, and that an amendment to a plan would be carefully considered. Of course, we have to consider all that information, but also consider it based off of facts. And again, going back to what I was saying earlier, there are no facts to support approval of this, absolutely none. Nothing in your planning, nothing in your zoning, just absolutely nothing. And again, with the expectation that we understood that at some point in time, this was going to be built, we were, we are okay with that. But we're okay with single-family homes, like the ones that are currently being built, as in your plan. So my question to you is, what are your guiding principles in order to approve or disapprove a plan? It's what, what's that document that you abide by? We know what that is, right? So go back to the source document, and what does it say? It clearly says that this area is intended for this specific type of home, not multifamily, anywhere from six to 10, single-family homes. Clear as day. And there's nothing that there, in my opinion, that, to debate that. In addition, when you talk about the footprint, so there was something in their proposal that was almost laughable. It said that the geographic footprint of one, of a one-story home is the same as a two- or three-story home. Condos. Now, I want you to imagine this. You got homes, and then you have a condo, same footprint in the back, and you tell me that's the same? That is not the same. Instead of looking at, you know, woods, you're looking at someone's window that's probably staring at you as you're taking a shower. Yeah, that's kind of what you're getting. Think about that for a second. That's what you're putting right in the back of our community, right in the back of it. Home offices, there was another thing in their proposal that was laughable. It said, "People are working from home offices, need office space now." I almost take offense to that, and the fact that someone is trying to utilize the current pandemic, almost take offense. Am I out of time again? Can I get another three minutes?
Yeah, mine, I have mine too. Yeah.
Do you have to get up?
I have my three minutes.
Okay, can you give us your name and address, please?
Linda Rose, 2454 Locust Hill Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Right.
Yeah. And I, and I should also mention that, that you're, you're limited to a maximum of nine
minutes, so you're, you're at six right now. So anyone else who wishes to, to do that?
Hi, I'm Ning Pei at 2615 Green Borough Court. I know you have my town tag.
Well, we, he already has enough.
Maxed out.
He's maxed out?
Yep, he's maxed out.
I know. I'm a lost.
Point order, please. That's it, go for no question.
Not right now.
Okay.
Okay.
When you, when you get your three minutes.
Okay, no parliamentary in here, huh?
All right.
Let's keep it civil, folks.
So continuing on, you know, the proposal stated that people work from home and need phone home offices now due to the pandemic. Again, as I iterated earlier, I almost take offense to that, that someone actually used the current national emergency to kind of produce rhetoric that would, that would generate thoughts that, hey, look, this is a good reason to build condos. I mean, really, give me a break. I mean, the fact of the matter is, all these folks here now, professionals, guess what? We have home offices. We have home offices in our home. We already have them. And I guarantee you, if someone else buys a single-family home, they're probably going to have a home office too. But again, the fact that this was actually iterated was almost appalling to a degree, because again, this is just information that can't be substantiated, can't be supported, and like I said, it tells me that someone is relatively desperate in their, in their attempt to get an approval, off of whatever basis they can. The last thing I want to talk about is, again, is just the professionals that we have in this neighborhood. Again, as I iterated when I opened them, my opening comments, we have professionals ranging from military officers, we have professionals that work on the base, we have professionals that work in the medical industry, we have folks that are retired, we have folks that are up-and-coming families. What I can tell you with absolute certainty is that, again, I could find not one individual that was in favor of this. What I can also tell What I can tell you with absolute certainty is that, again, I could find not one individual that was in favor of this. What I can also tell you is, if you listen to what I just said, this is something that if you opt to prove, to approve tonight with absolutely no information to support that, again, we will not back down from this. Because again, this is just beyond wrong. It's not right. You know it. I know it. We all know it. We all know it. So what I would implore you to do is, we can make this hearing short, or we can make it long. Because again, the easy answer is already in front of you. The easy answer is to disapprove. And I implore you, if you say right now, this is disapproved, we're done. We are done tonight. Approve or disapprove, or we have to keep going?
Everybody gets a chance to speak tonight, and then we deliberate and we make our decisions.
Copy all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Robert Emerling. I feel like I'm meeting my long-lost pen pals. Do you mind coming up real quick?
Do you want to go ahead and yield?
Yeah, this is my beautiful wife, Susan Emerling.
Can I yield my three minutes to him now? Okay, okay, thank you.
Do you mind pulling up the presentation?
Presumably y'all are at the same address.
We are, yes.
Okay.
Yep, 2489 Forest Oaks Drive.
And I'll yield my three to this one since Quincy ran out. Ning Peo at 2615 Green Barrow Court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. So I had, oh, perfect. Submitted a PowerPoint presentation for your viewing pleasure tonight. So the research that we've done, we kind of feel like there's three pillars that we can stand on tonight for why we should disapprove this amendment. Historical context for both the land use plan as well as the VPA. The 2020 land use plan that just went into effect, and what I like to refer to as the slippery slope or domino effect, should this progress? So historical context, based on discussions that we've had with legal counsel and, and our own research, we feel that the Beaver Creek Planning Commission has been very conservative historically with land use amendments. And Mr. Self, I credit you. You've, you've served this position for a lengthy amount of time. Do you mind sharing with us how long you've been present?
Thirty-four years.
That's awesome. Thank you for your service, sir. Do you find that top bullet to be a fair point and reflective of how we've typically approached this? Yes, you do. Thank you. So for everybody's knowledge, there is a five-year minimum review period of the land use plan, and we just recently completed this at the beginning of this year. Is that accurate information? Okay, I see some heads nodding. So based on the research that we did, and credit to Beaver Creek, there is a wealth of knowledge available online, so we could pull up lots of previous historical information here. We found zero instances of land use plan amendments that took a low-density, single-family residential property and moved that to a higher density. Now, there could be something in the archives that we could not access, and I encourage you guys to share that with us. I put out a request earlier this week without any response, but we would love to see that information. What we did find is in February of 2014, PC 14-4 actually came in front of you guys. This was a land use plan amendment for Grange Hall, Shakertown region. It was a 49-acre plot. This is VPA 64. It is still VPA 64, and it is a low-density, single-family residential as it was brought to the, the committee that night. So the planning staff, much like tonight, recommended approval. The residents rallied against this, very much so like tonight. And ultimately, what came of that is by a five-to-zero vote, PC 14-4 was disallowed and disapproved. And Mr. Self, I understand that you were present for that. Okay, next, next slide here. So this is taken directly from, I think that says page 18. I need some glasses, apparently. Mr. Self, some of your comments that night, and I want to focus on the highlighted portion at the bottom. You stated that the land use plan has been amended when necessary because surrounding properties developed differently from the way the city thought it was going to. You stated that this is not the case in this situation. I would argue that is very similar to what we are up against tonight. Some additional historical context here. BC Golf purchased this plot of land in February of 1995. This is direct from the county auditor's website. And I got to tell you, if that's what they actually paid, I need to bring them to the negotiation table when next time I'm looking at real estate. This was the residential community planning and development plan that BC Golf participated in. This was in September of 95. What you see here is there was a 12-phase, 12-phase project that was brought to the table. It was approved. We have followed this plan since 1995. We have actually broken ground on Phase 11 in the bottom-left corner of that picture that you're looking at. And then what are they developing? They're developing single-family properties with a low density. I have a table on the lower left here, okay? So G indicates Phase 9, which is on the right, lower-right side of this property, which is part of this VPA 17. You can see what the current permit is for this. They have a higher density already allowed. And with G1, which is most closely aligned to where all of our residents' properties are that are being represented tonight, it has been designated as a low-density, three dwellings-per-acre property. Okay, so it's already, it's already on the books. I'm not sure why we're here discussing this. Okay, so to dive in to the 2020 land use plan, you guys just pushed this through, to my understanding. Is that correct? Okay. Page 24, VPA 17. Right on the page, the items in red that are underlined, VPA 17 is designated for low-density residential development. The items in red here were just added this year. Development and this VPA should be in similar scale and design as the newer homes that have been constructed in the areas immediately adjacent to the golf course. What has changed in the last two weeks or two months? Why are we sitting here? Why is there a 180-degree turn from this language? Okay, just to recap, we do this every five years. I applaud you. For those residents that aren't aware of it, there's other cities that have much longer time periods in between updates. During this update, you guys determined there was no need to modify VPA 17 and the density that's currently there. In fact, you added language that I interpret and that we interpret that's more restrictive, that would never allow apartments to be considered on this property. So I guess my questions are, what's changed? Do you guys have compelling information that our local residents are not aware of that would drive this decision? My last point here is this slippery slope or domino effect. There is a lot of VPA nearby us, 16, 25, 32, 33, all in close proximity. What is to prevent those, those individuals, those landowners from filing for similar modifications? And what about the individuals that own 10, 18, 19, and 27 on the west side of town? Are you guys going to pick and choose winners and losers based on who owns these plots? Is that the intent of the land use plan, or is the intent to give a general guidance on how we want to develop our beloved Beaver Creek? My last item here, not sure how I'm doing on time, is the proposed layout. And I, I know it's difficult to see up there, but I actually have red Xs on the apartments as the developer had presented to your team last month. During the meeting, it was a little frustrating for me to watch the video. He, he expressed his concern and how they would be sensitive to the current homeowners and that they would dense, you know, have a higher density on the north side, when in reality, what they proposed to you guys, what is well-documented, is that they put seven properties on the north end, and they put 11 on the south end. And while my numbers in terms of dwellings and the acreage should be fairly accurate here, there was no effort taken at this initial plan to put any sort of higher density on the north side versus the south side. Their intention is clear. They simply want you guys to take a broad brush, give us a medium density for this entire property, because at that point, they can do whatever they want. So this is what we're asking. Please continue to execute. With that 1995 PUD plan that was put into place by BC Golf, they brought it to the table. You guys approved it. They have executed every single phase, and now we want to make a modification. And lastly, maintain and enforce this 2020 land use plan where the ink isn't even dry yet. It doesn't even go into effect for two weeks, and we're sitting here tonight arguing our case against you. I ask that you respect this. Lastly, thank you for the work that you guys are doing. I, I have never had to dig into something like this. The resources that are available to us, it's amazing how much information we could find. And that's a credit to you guys and your team and the work that you guys put in. So thank you very much.
Your timing was impeccable. You had eight seconds left. Okay, next. We have a couple of vacant chairs for those of you out in the hall.
Good evening. Thank you very much for entertaining all of us tonight. I'm Tammy Whalen. My husband, Richard, and I live at 2684 Wyndham Drive in the Woodlands. Seventeen years ago Thanksgiving is when we moved into the Woodlands. We had retired from the military and knew we were going to stay here. As we were looking to build, we had lots of choices. We had Washington Township, we had Oakwood, we even looked at Bell Brook, and we looked at Beaver Creek. What drew us to Beaver Creek, and specifically the Woodlands development, was on the second day we drove through the area, there were only four or five houses built at that time, a red fox came running across the road in front of us. My husband and I enjoy our privacy. We enjoy nature. The setting of Beaver Creek, and in particular, the Woodlands, was what bought, was what caused us to build in that plant. We are able to watch deer. We still see that fox once in a while, or a relative of them. We have raccoons that we are chasing off our bird feeders on a daily basis. We have a whole family of skunks cruise up and down, cruises up and down the neighborhood. We have a plethora of birds. This year, for the second year in a row, we had the opportunity to have pilated woodpeckers hanging out in our area. If you don't know about them, they're the biggest woodpecker in this area. They're very rare in this area. But to hang out over by that golf course in the Woodlands. We knew that there would be development of, of low-end, low-density housing at the end of the plant. We knew that moving in. Ryan Holmes was very open about future construction plans around the area. And that's fine. But to put in apartment complexes will destroy the environment that we currently enjoy in that area. If you take a look at your, your map, there are very few real green spaces throughout the city of Beaver Creek. We have a few parks, but not much else. In that particular side of town, we have a lot of condominiums. Adding in more apartment buildings is going to take out the rest of the woods that are in that area. Along with that, there, the deer will go, the foxes will go, the occasional coyote will go, which is kind of okay with me. The raccoons, they're pretty industrious. They're liable to stay. Am I out of time? Thank you for considering the environmental impacts of what you're doing.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Alan Sheffield, 2511 Muirfield Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, and kind of live off of five. Been living there since 2004. I was HOA president for about six years. And it's odd, well, besides the environmental impact, so we do, I, I don't know how many other neighborhoods know about what's going on today. So you have the Villas across the street from where you're planning to put this, the Canterbury Trails folks. So question, are the only people who know about, which developments know about what's going on? Can anybody answer that?
It would be anyone, anyone, help me out here. Anyone within 500 feet, is that correct?
So, the-
Within 500 feet of the outline of the property.
Okay, so the condominiums, the other people who will be affected, the condominiums right next to us, they were not notified, correct? Okay, the people on the other side of New Germany Trebine, have they been contacted about this? Like the Villas, have they been notified? Do you know who the Villas of Beaver Creek are?
Yes, they were.
They were not, okay, I figured as much. What about the, what about the people on their side of Wyndham on Eagle's Nest? Is there anybody here from Eagle's Nest or the Villas? Because when I would talk to people who would be going around the neighborhood, they knew they were not notified. They, well, no, I'm sorry, sorry. They did not know about it. So anyhow, so I'll keep moving since I don't want to lose time. So besides the, well, we got the environmental impact, have you been contacted by the Woodlands Association of Beaver Creek? I talked to Mr. Dave, I forgot his last name. So they will be getting involved as well in all this. They had a meeting. They did not know about it either. So I think they had, they had a meeting around 2:00 when we sent them, Eric and the gang, sent them information. So they're finding out about it for the first time. They had a meeting about it at 2:00, so they're going to press forward as well, just like Quincy said. We're not going to lay down on this. This is silly. Make sure I, and so besides all the other extra traffic, right now, we don't have, we have, we have our garbage trucks, we have school buses, those are fine. The next big thing that's going to come up is an RTA bus. Because right now, there's no reason for RTA to run down into Trebine to Beaver Creek, Beaver Valley, I mean, or beyond. So that's going to be a load on our traffic. They already put in the road where you can't really see when you're trying to get out of our intersection. And with that, I've got nine seconds left. So this is a really, really bad idea, and we won't stop trying to not let it happen. It's just sad that people who are making these decisions don't live where it affects us, where it affects us. I think I got my point across. The big thing is, we're, we're not going to stop right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Spangler, and I live at 2626 Wyndham Drive. I, my husband and children and I have lived there for only about three years. We are lifelong residents of Beaver Creek, Ohio. I work at the base. My husband is a sergeant at the police department, where he serves this community for about 25 years. And the reason that I wanted to speak today is prior to moving to this community, we lived in King's Crossing behind the Fairfield Commons Mall. We moved there in 2000, and when we moved there, there were three homes. And by the time we moved out, we moved because that particular neighborhood became saturated with multiple single-family homes, multiple apartment complexes, condos, just, if you've gone back there, it is just, just completely saturated. And we decided that we didn't want to raise our children in, in, in a community where there was traffic flowing through constantly, that it was, it became very transient, a lot of vacant homes, a lot of rental homes, a lot of renters coming and going. So when we were looking around Beaver Creek and we came across this community, it was well-established, and it was very clear that the, that the land had a plan, and that plan was unchanged for 25, you know, 25 years. So we were very certain that this was the place. This was the place to raise our children. This was the place where they can run out in the neighborhood and not worry about cars speeding in and out of the neighborhood. So to, to even think about putting apartment complexes in there, you know, the schools- about putting apartment complexes in there, you know, the schools, the impact of the schools, the fact that the townships are building home after home after home, and even before they're building, they're selling out. So to me, that's evidence that single-family homes are still in high demand. So why even have the apartment complexes when we have such a great plan for the single-family homes? So for myself and for everybody who lives in our community, whether they built the home, or they came to the community where the home was, you know, when the community was well-established, we all want the same thing. We just want the plan to remain the way it was. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Moy. I live at 2704 Wyndham Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio. So I'd just like to say, I grew up in the neighborhood since fourth grade, and, you know, I've been biking around and whatnot. So now I'm currently active duty, Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. So, you know, I think, you know, other points that haven't been said, just like, yeah, the population density, and then as I bike to work and stuff, when I go down, it's just pretty terrible with, you know, I'm sure everyone can attest, exiting our neighborhood is atrocious. You know, as population increases, especially with apartments, will draw in a lot more people. It's just ridiculous. And the safety is, yes, it's definitely something to be of concern. And so, you know, I bike every morning, and it's just, you know, very difficult, and I worry about my safety as well as others' peoples', and, you know, just the environment, the safety of individuals, the, so that's really my take on it, but, you know, short and sweet, but, yeah.
You can tell he's an Air Force briefer. Next.
Good evening. My name is Robert Ruckman. I live at 2617 Wyndham Drive. I'm within that 500 feet of this proposed zone changing. I won't reiterate the points that have been made. They've been made very well. A peripheral issue to all of this that affects or possibly could affect many of the people here is home value. That may sound somewhat self-concerned, but it is nevertheless a reality. I'm a retired teacher. I was the chair of the music department at Sinclair for 35 years, and when it came time to buy our retirement home, I could have, could have bought just about anywhere, looked all over the place, settled on Canterbury, the Woodlands, because of not only the home value, but the perception I had that the stability of home values was going to be something dependable. I'm on fixed income. The value of my property is important to me, and I imagine everybody else here could say the same thing. So that's, that's all I really want to make. The other points have been made very clearly. My concern is that the home values would not decrease as a result of this zoning change. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Doom. I live at 2584 Greenbrier Court, and I'm concerned about the environmental aspects of this amendment, and I'd like to give my time to Tammy to talk about it further.
Okay.
Thank you. At the end of the Woodlands plat, there is a retention pond. It wasn't addressed on any of the maps or anything, but there is a retention pond down there. Familiar with this because when I was on the Homeowners Association Board several years ago, part of the controversy came up regarding maintenance of it and its purpose. And the city, this city itself, said that that whole retention pond was part of the rain management system for that part of town. And through the years, we've had the developments, the continuation of the condominiums on the other side of New Germany Traybine. I believe that's in the township portion. We've had new completion of the building in that area. Since that time, we continue to have rainwater and drainage issues. If you, during the next rain, big rain, if we ever get one again, I challenge you to drive down to the intersection of Beaver Valley and New Germany Traybine. Take a look at the cornfield that's there, and there's a Beaver Creek runs on the other side of the road from there, and watch the water. The cornfield years ago barely flooded, rarely flooded and drained off rapidly. Now, this past spring, the water stands in that field for days and days at a time. The continued building in that area without adequate consideration for the drainage of the rainwater is already a problem. Yeah, it's the township's problem. It might be Fairborn's problem, but it is, there is that impact still within that area. And I highly urge you to take a look at the environmental conditions of the rainwater drainage along that area. We all know parking lots don't absorb water like yards do. Single-family homes, as was originally planned, will help manage the drainage problems that we currently exist. Apartments will exacerbate those problems. And at some point in time, those Beaver Creek Township and those Fairborn residents may well come back on Beaver Creek because Beaver Creek caused the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Moore. I live at 2635 Wyndham Drive. I've lived that residence for five years. Retired Air Force C.E. officer, now working for the community, and that's what I'd like to talk about, is why we've chosen this community. That subdivision was part of what made us choose to live and stay and contribute to this community. Part of it is because the informed decision-making we made in making that decision to purchase that house. Going through there, having worked within C.E. and then served in many of your similar positions, I've served in planning zoning meetings, and what you're facing is a tough decision. But I think it's a fairly easy one because it's being informed by, by the facts. I think placement, that same decision-making when I made the house purchase, what was the future land use at the end of the road? Very key. It was very straightforward, very deliberate, very consistent, and it was very transparent. That was to be single-family, low-density housing. That was part of our decision. That is not something to be made a reactionary decision to. I own decisions, and what I had to face too, and similarly in the Air Force, I had to be very transparent, very deliberate, very informed. And that's what I'm hoping you're making today, is a very informed decision based on what truly makes us the community that it is. You can see the pouring out of passion, informed decision-making, caring, and I don't want to see that erode based on a higher density housing development that will change, traffic usage. It was mentioned already, safety on the streets, environmental concerns, NEPA considerations, all those things to be factored in. So I just implore you to please look at it holistically, look at it through both lenses of those that live there, as well as yourselves in terms of not a reactionary decision, but a very clear, consistent, and deliberate decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Stone. I live at 2482 Forest Oaks Drive, the road that empties into where this new community is going to be planned. I stand here tonight in firm unity with my neighbors against this change in zoning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate the work you guys do. I'm sure you're very underappreciated in the community, but I know it's hard work. You deal with this kind of stuff once a month or however often you do it, and I thank you for that work. In regards to the decision before you to amend the zoning for VPA 17 from low to medium density, I believe the easy incorrect answer is for the commission to vote no. The Planning Commission and City Council recently completed an extensive review for the 2020 land use plan and determined that there was no need to modify VPA 17. Rob Emmerly went into details and even noted that that was affirmed and even further affirmed at that time. That was the correct decision then, and it still is. And nothing's changed. That was the 2020 plan. It's still 2020. There's no reason that's come up that has been identified to our knowledge that would change what was recently just decided by this group. And so I urge you to carry that forward. And also, again, the 2015 land use plan was the same decision, again, affirmed in 2020. As a resident of Beaver Creek, I and others in this community, we want to seek to trust the commission and the city council to make good, consistent decisions over time. When I moved into my neighborhood eight years ago, the zoning for VPA was single-family residential. There is the component at the top that's medium density. I understand, if that stays that way, that's fine. That's not what we're here against specifically. And that zoning's been that way for 25 years. I relied on that fact when I purchased my house, and I echoed the sentiments of the lady a few before me, who said that she appreciated the wildlife and the beauty and the trees and so forth. A big chunk of that is going to go away if you put apartments down there. Changing the zoning to allow condos and apartments in the same neighborhood will drastically alter the neighborhood for the worse. I can't think of a golf course in this area or anywhere that has apartments right there on the course. It doesn't make sense. In the research that I could find, I, and I agree with what Rob Emmerly said before, we don't find decisions in the past that are affirmed moving from low to medium density. Right, and so what's next? It's the slippery slope. There are different VPAs around there. It doesn't make sense for this one to change, and it doesn't make sense for those to change either. The original plan, 12-phase development from B.C. Gulf was submitted 25 years ago. It's been consistent ever since. Every phase has been completed as it was, and it should continue to do so. It should not change. There is no valid reason for it to change. I ask you not to give special treatment to a developer, allowing him to make the property more valuable.
You're out of time.
All right.
You're out of time.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Holly Dunlap. I live at 2650 Wyndham Drive. When we bought our home, we bought it for the view and the surrounding areas with the assumption that if surrounding areas included additional development, it would include homes of similar single-family home style. As a military family, the ability to resell our home on a limited notice at being able to recoup our initial investment is crucial and part of our decision process in purchasing a house. It appears the strategic plan for the area agrees with the assumptions, given that it was zoned as a low-density and single-family homes. When initially moving here, our HOA had recently petitioned for mitigation of the blind turn off Wyndham Drive onto New German Traybine. The city did not redid the road, but failed to build up the base of the hill to mitigate the blind turn at all, effectively repaving the road and making it easier to speed. Over the past seven years, traffic has only increased, making the intersection increasingly dangerous. Combined with the lack of sidewalks and bike paths along the road, pedestrians and cyclists are more exposed to traffic on the road. Schools, elementary, middle, and high school in the area are already bursting at the seams. Increased density in the area will only exacerbate the problem. We are concerned about the school-student-to-teacher ratio and overcrowding so much, we have already been driven to private schooling. That is not our favored approach. Additionally, busing in Beaver Creek schools is already looking at upwards of 45 minutes to our, to our neighborhoods. Increased family density would only compound this problem. We have reviewed the available information on the proposal, and it makes a case for how the applicant can make a reasonable return on investment for their approach. I think whether they can return a profit or not is irrelevant to the need to changing the zoning. Our, what is the benefit, what benefit does our rezoning provide our community? The people that live here, who utilize the local infrastructure here and pay into the economy and tax system to ensure what our current needs are being met. How does this benefit us? It appears it doesn't. It appears it helps the applicant at the expense of devaluing our homes, lowering our safety, and putting increased burden on our children. We vote for our city council members to represent our community's interests over the interest of a financial interest of a single developer. We have a very unique community. One thing that hasn't been stated is, it's a very small community. We have around 50 houses. We have people that have moved out of state and come back to our neighborhood and bought another house. We have people that have rented a house, their term of rental period has ended, they've moved up the street to a different house. We have people that own a house and moved three blocks down from us. Maybe, may have been my neighbor, but nonetheless, the point is that people like our community. We want to live there, and we want to live there as we assumed when we bought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm impressed with your endurance tonight.
Oh, this is nothing.
Excellent.
Trust me.
I'd like to see some of those others.
I went through them all hearings.
Fair enough. My name's Ronald Dunlap. I go by Tyke. I am the lesser half of the 2650 Wyndham Drive, is my wife, who's just up here. I'm also an active-duty colonel stationed at the base. And I say that because I'm not as a representative of the United States government, but because some of the data I'm going to provide is based on that expertise. We bought our house on Wyndham seven years ago when I was assigned here for a three-year tour. We are enamored with the stability, schools, and strategic plan for the city. Since living here, we've obviously extended, and I intend to retire here locally. My wife has re-vectored her career as well, due to that same stability and community-mindedness that we've come to love about the city. So I'm surprised that we're at this point having a discussion about the land use plan for VPA 17. I'm also surprised, after having reviewed the staff report, that it appears they're advocating on behalf of the developer, vice requesting further analysis. I'm not certain if that was their intent, but that's how it appears to us. I'm surprised that the developers made the assertion that Wright-Patterson Air Force Base growth will bring in more transient folks who wish to work from home out of a small apartment. The demographics of Wright-Patterson don't bear out to support that. Wright-Patt is certainly expanding, bringing in major new aircraft and software acquisition programs, as well as expansion of NASIC. The employee population eclipsed 30,000 for the first time since 1964 last year. But the advanced nature of those new programs and the history of who's hired at Wright-Patterson show us that the vast preponderance of skill sets needed are highly technical and highly experienced. The Life Cycle Management Center, the largest organization on base where I work, and where those major acquisition programs will reside, has an average employee age of 45.6, and two-thirds of the workforce are mid-career civilians. Another 20% are senior civilian and officer, senior officer, like myself. All generally folks looking for single-family homes. The Air Force Research Lab has 70% of its workforce with advanced academic degrees, primarily doctorates, more seasoned experts, likely with existing families and vehicles who aren't typically apartment dwellers. There is no indication that the growth of the positions at Wright-Patterson will change that distribution curve. Those manpower positions are based on need. We are a headquarters base that runs a major command with significant senior positions, both general officer and top-tier civilians, and they require experienced advisors and staff. I offer that data to add to the voices of our community to emphatically state that we have historically come to expect stability and predictability in the long-term planning out of this commission, and given the recent review of the 2020 land use plan, it appears that that expectation was met. So again, I'm surprised we're actually even having this discussion, to decide whether an already wealthy developer should be given a pass to become wealthier at the expense of landowners who long ago invested into an established, fair, and sound strategy. We see no reason to change the land use plan. I'm convinced you will see that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Another Air Force briefer that knows his time.
Hi, my name is Rick Goldberg. I live on Greenbrier Court. I represent myself and my wife Kathy in this matter. We bought, we built there 15 years ago with the understanding that the current zoning, which is one of the big reasons we built there, the area was all zoned at that time, and we assumed that it was going to stay that way, which is one of the reasons that we wanted to come in there. I guess I would be surprised if any of the issues that were brought up by our, all the people that have spoken, I would be surprised- that have spoken, I would be surprised if you didn't already know them. We came together as a group, maybe many groups, to try to understand what these issues would be, so we could come and talk to you today. But we're not the experts. You're the experts. And so there's something called a change management discipline that I would be, I'm surprised that that wasn't used in problem-solving here. And what you do is you take the impact of all of the stakeholders when you're trying to make a change. What I've heard tonight is that you're only focused on the developer and yourselves. What about your constituents who bought the homes in that area with the understanding that the zoning would stay as it was? So my question to you is, where's your concern for us? In order to allay our fears, you should have identified all these issues, performed the necessary research, engaged in the necessary studies, and developed a communication plan, and presented it fairly before this meeting even took place. So I'm concerned that, I don't see that concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Kazmer. My wife and I, we live at 2411 Forest Oaks Drive. Have nothing new to add that hasn't already been said, but just want to provide another voice of opposition against Papa Charlie 2010 and the changing the existing land use plan. And I donate the rest of my time. The next person runs over. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Avon Ford. I live at 2595 Greenbrier Court. I'm speaking for myself and my wife, Shailen. Again, I don't have a lot to add over what Rob Emmerling and Quincy Hurns and Rick Goldberg have already said, but I just kind of wanted to tell my story. When my wife and I, my wife and I are both active-duty Air Force, both lieutenant colonels, and when we PCSed here six years ago, we had a lot of choices of where we could live. And when we started looking at houses, this house was the first one we looked at. And we chose not to live near her grandmother, near my wife's grandmother in Washington Township. And we chose not to live near her cousins and aunt and uncle in Centerville because we fell in love with the community. We fell in love with the house. We fell in love with the neighborhood. We fell in love with these people that we've now gotten to know. And as we've been here, our family has grown. We now have three kids. We moved here with one, now we have three. And I bought my daughter a bike today and let her go. And it's the great thing about the neighborhood is, I can let my kids play outside, and I don't have to be there every second watching them. I can let my daughter ride her bike in the street, knowing that I know everybody who's coming in the street. And that safety and that sense of community is why I bought where I bought, with the assumption that I know that the land could be developed. But the assumption was the land would continue to be an extension of the neighborhood where I already live, instead of something different. And so I fell in love with Beaver Creek. We didn't know, similar story to Tyke's, we thought we would only be here for four or five years, and we thought that maybe we would be able to resell our house in four or five years. And so that's why, another reason why we bought somewhere where we thought that the housing would keep its value. But I've now extended for another four years. So we've been here for six, have extended another four. I hope to make it another three after that, and we want to retire here. We want our kids to go to Beaver Creek High School. We want our, you know, this is where we want to be. And so we want the neighborhood to stay what it's been. So, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Sullivan. I live at 2442 Forest Oaks with my husband, Kelly, here. I didn't plan anything. I didn't prepare anything. I think you've already heard it all, and by the turnout here, you can see everyone here is opposed. We live on Forest Oaks. We live right along where you're planning to propose to put apartments. And just as the others said, we bought the house because we loved the area. It's a quiet area, a quiet neighborhood. We're down along the back cul-de-sac area, right along hole number seven, right where you're proposing to put apartments in that area. It totally changes the landscape of what we purchased eight years ago. And for that reason, we encourage you to look at the history, the historical decisions that have been made, and stick with those decisions to leave the land use plan as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Sullivan, 2442 Forest Oaks.
The tag team.
Right. I figured I better follow that. But there's been a lot of good points made. Traffic's my biggest concern, because left turns out of there are very difficult. And being a business owner in Beaver Creek, usually kind of running a minute or two late, it's like, I gotta make this turn, and it just wait, and wait, and wait. And so, a lot of new homes going up on Traybine, a lot of new homes going up on Beaver Valley, and just a lot of more traffic already, so we don't need to change something that's already zoned for low-density, for single-family homes, to putting more and more cars out there. I don't know how they're going to widen New Germany Traybine out front of us, if they, they're going to have to sometime, but it's, they're limited there. But regardless, a lot of good points, not a big fan of the skunks, but the wildlife's great, other than that. I would just say, from a human side of it, when you see the passion in here tonight, and everybody coming up here, so many people, there are people waiting out in the hallway, I mean, standing on their feet, they've been at work all day, waiting their turn to come up here and talk. You guys gotta, I mean, you gotta see this. And it's like, we're all neighbors. We're all Beaver Creek people, right? You know, and you don't want to do this to your neighbors. We're all in this together, right? All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. How are you? I have laryngitis, but I thought it important to come and speak to you anyway, despite doctor's orders. My name is Dr. Thomas Cruzmark, and I am the first homeowner in Canterbury. So I built the first home in this development. Plus, I am the first HOA president that this development had. I came here 17 years ago. I'm a retired lieutenant colonel from the Air Force, and I'm currently the area 10-state director for the U.S. Small Business Administration. And in part of my role, I take a look at communities and how they are linked to the business community and the surrounding population. I first moved here 17 years ago with the entire purpose of being in a neighborhood that is unique, unique in terms of maintaining environmental complexity, in terms of having space for children to roam. Plus, I'm growing increasingly concerned about the senior community, our seniors that are not only in our neighborhood, but also in the condos up the street. I see these seniors walk the streets, walk across, or attempt to cross the street, and it's dangerous, and something's going to happen. And the safety issue is paramount here, and it's going to get worse and worse if you approve this development. I implore you to squash this very, very terrible idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Boring, 2728 Wyndham Drive. Mr. Self, I want to commend you for your many years of service on what you do, and I can only, and with that service comes a lot of wisdom. You must have been doing something right over the years, and I hope that you will impart that wisdom upon the younger folks that are on the Planning Commission. Me personally, and I'm speaking only by myself, not my community members, I look at this as a political decision. We have the 2020 document in front of us, and immediately there is a change that potentially could take place. No offense, Mr. Self, but the rest of the Planning Commission members, you all look fairly young. I'm a political science major, and in my studies for my degree, oftentimes, someone like yourself uses disposition as a stepping stone to something greater in the future. The community that I reside in, we are a community of professionals that have resources available to us. And we also will have a very good memory in years to come. I implore you to make the decision on behalf of everyone who spoke tonight, and I believe that you have heard that message very clearly. We are adamantly opposed to this. You represent Beaver Creek. We are Beaver Creek. Let the developer go to some other city and develop what they want. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Li Ning Chi. Currently, I'm working at the Cargill Data R&amp;D. I used to, I moved to Beaver Creek in 2007, and I bought this house four years ago because of the peaceful environment, and both my kids grew up here. I want to say, when we bought the house, and when we moved to Beaver Creek, we know it's, you know, the Beaver Creek Committee and also the Planning Committee is more like a consistent policy. So every five years, you guys do the planning minimum thus. So we have that trust in there. So when we bought the house, the house value, the land value, the developer, you guys already made plenty of money. For the last, how many years, the Beaver Creek value, the house value, and the land value has increased a lot. You want to make extra to make into an apartment complex, that's kind of ruined the contrast, contract between the current residents with the developer at the beginning, right? Because you saw that as low-density, community area. So for me, I'm a single mother with two kids. It's all my money is right there. It's my retirement, seriously. It's not that easy, but my kids love it there, and I don't need to worry about their safety. They can play in the front yard, backyard. I don't even need to worry about that. That's the beautiful about Beaver Creek. That's the beauty about the community. And we all neighbors, trust each other. It's just, it's such a beautiful community. Please don't ruin it. Don't bring more traffic. Don't make our kids upset. Money, I mean, is never enough. Don't make too much, seriously. And thank you.
Thank you.
Mine will be pretty quick, just one little thing. So, my name's Ken Nelson. I'm a senior engineering project manager at Ornet at Ohio State.
It would probably help if you took your mask off, just for this, just for this.
All right. Yeah, so.
You tend to be muffled if you don't.
Yeah. My name's Ken Nelson. I'm a senior engineering project manager at Ornet at Ohio State, and I live at 2412 Forest Oaks, which is, if I look out my office window, would be looking at the new condos that they're trying to build, or apartment buildings. It's nice now seeing the golf course in the woods, but besides that, the point I have is, just a few years back, I was in the rental market, and I was renting. I had no trouble finding apartments. I mean, there were literally hundreds of apartments to find, and I had my pick of those upscale apartments. I didn't have to, like, wait to get one. They were just there. The houses right now are just the opposite. You put a house on the market, and in 24 hours, you have dozens of people in a bidding war for it. So there's a much larger market for those single-family homes than any apartments, because people with apartments, they have their choices, and they come and go. People with houses, they stay, and they contribute to the community, and that's very important. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Clark, and I live at 2433 Locust Hill Boulevard. We also own another piece of property here in Beaver Creek, so we are homeowners that are so proud to be Beaver Creek residents. We are retired military. My husband deployed three tours out of Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. When we were in Germany in 2001, we had the opportunity to decide where we were going to buy our first home. We were in our 40s when we purchased our very first home. We were renters our whole lives. We saved everything, and we called Beaver Creek our home. We were here in 2001, we went to Germany, and we looked, we'd lived everywhere in the world, to include overseas, and Hawaii. And we decided that Beaver Creek was going to be our home because of the community. These people here are our community. We have lived in transient communities our whole life, until I was 45, when we had the opportunity to purchase our first home here in Beaver Creek. My son graduated from Beaver Creek High School, and we're so proud of our community. I'm proud of the Kugler Wetlands, and that's why we chose that corridor right there and that area, because of the beauty, the natural beauty, the Stebenthaller Finn, phenomenal. But as one lady testified, that whole area is flooding now. I had, I also work over at Cedarville, and so I had to detour one afternoon, or one morning, I believe, to get to there, because it is flooding, and I am very concerned about the environment and the impact. I'm also concerned about our residential community in terms of traffic and the impact of getting to Soyne. I'm also a nurse, and I live in a community with lots of retirees and older citizens. How are they going to get to Soyne in a timely manner, when we only have, New Germany Traybine is two roads, and there's that divider? I was here before that was expanded, and it was beautiful. The trees were phenomenal. But I understood the need for that expansion. But we're going to have to expand it again if we continue to grow the community at the rate that we are, with the communities being built on Beaver Valley and those beyond Beaver Valley and that corridor there. So those are my concerns for the environmental impact, our green space, the oxygenation that the trees give us, access to the hospital with only a two-lane highway, and then the pride in the community. I would prefer to see single-family developments here because I know my neighbors. This is the first time in over 25 years, as a military wife, as a veteran myself, that I know my neighbors. And I call Beaver Creek my home, and I'm afraid that if this is passed, I'm going to have to sell my home or rent my home, and I don't want to rent my home, because I believe in my community. I want people to be here. I want people to be passionate. I can tell you, I am still connected very highly at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. As the colonel said, the types of families that are looking for homes in this community are not the single airmen. They're family members with children who are looking for solid schools, and they're looking for solid government leadership that we have here in this community. And I'd like for that to continue. So as a resident here, I'm proud to say I'm a member of Beaver Creek. We had our opportunity to live anywhere in the world, and we chose to come back two tours, and we also chose to come back and not be a renter this time, but be homeowners. Thank you so much for your time, and I ask you to vote no on this proposal.
Thank you.
My name's Pete Bales, lifelong resident of Beaver Creek. I live at 2391 Forest Oaks Drive. It's the last house that's directly up against VPA 17. First, I'd like to thank you all for your patience and your willingness to sit and listen intently to a passionate, well-informed, and organized group of citizens who have bonded together, really, to rally around a common purpose. I feel like it's truly democracy in action, and we've seen it firsthand tonight. Secondly, my wife and I are the original owners of our house. It's at the end of Forest Oaks. 15 years ago, we designed it and bought the lot, and we carefully scrutinized every aspect of the single-largest investment we've ever made. We had our choice of many lots in the entire neighborhood, and we selected Lot 46 at the end of the street. We selected that lot for many reasons. Has a beautiful view of the Six Green. The house we wanted to build fit nicely on the lot. the lot, and it was at the end of a dead-end street or a stub street. And because there was no cul-de-sac, I wanted to make sure that I completely understood, completely understood the long-range plan for that property. So I did research. I discovered that it was listed in the long-range plan as low-density, single-family residential. I also read Ordinance 9555, which established the PUD for the golf course and the development surrounding that. And again, that called for that area around my house and so forth to be low-density, single-family residential. So I always knew there would come a day when that vacant land would be developed, and I've got no problem with that. I just want to see the development done in a manner that upholds the integrity of our investment, the integrity of our neighborhood, and conforms to the professional, long-range plan that you, as trusted staff and planning commissioners, worked hard to protect. Finally, many of you, or some of you, have been associated with the Planning Commission for many, many years, and our planning staff are the best as they come. I have a lot of respect for them, and I know that you're all very professional planners. And as a former municipal administrator myself, I have a strong appreciation for the professional thought, preparation, community input, and everything that goes into crafting and revising long-range plans. After all, these are the type of documents that shape our community. They provide the roadmap that we can all count on to keep Beaver Creek as one of the most desirable cities in Ohio, right? That's what we want. So the land use plan was just reviewed and adopted by City Council less than one month ago. So the most recent amendment to the plan, and I know it's been stated, but I think it's important to state it again, stated that VPA 17, the development in this VPA should be similar scale and design as the newer homes that have been constructed in the areas immediately adjacent to the golf course. That's our neighborhood. That statement was just added to the new one. One second. And reviewed multiple public hearings, adopted by staff, adopted by the Planning Commission, and adopted by council. So there's nothing about this current development proposal that would warrant a change tonight. So I appreciate you listening to us, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. How are you tonight? My name's Chuck Stansberry. I live at 2432 Forest Oaks Drive. And so that's about four houses up from where the entrance would be to this new development. And, you know, I was in the Air Force for 20 years. First time I was in Beaver Creek was '86 to '93. I moved to Florida, and I came back here because I wanted to live here and retire here, and I wanted my family to be here. And so Beaver Creek's home to me. I want to live in a home that's, you know, in a development with single-family homes. It's always been important to me. I've probably owned, I think, seven or eight homes. You know, I moved around and never even thought about buying a house that was in a neighborhood next to an apartment complex. And I helped my son buy a house last year. We looked at a lot of houses. He's not, he was in a, you know, a house range that's not like our, the neighborhood we're talking about. So he had a lot of different situations. We looked at some pretty nice homes in his price range, and standing in the front yard, we could see apartment complexes across the street. Those houses had no value to us at all. We didn't even make offers, or think about it, even though the houses were nice houses, because it was, that's not where he wanted to live. He didn't want to live on a street with apartments right across the street, you know, because you could see the parking lots there. You could see it was going to be just a high turnover of people, probably have parties there, you know, who knows? But essentially, the houses had no value to us. So, you know, those of us in our neighborhood, we bought the houses and have the houses, and we live there because they're single-family houses. You're talking about making this change, which puts an apartment complex within sight of my house. If I'd have known that, you know, I wouldn't live there. And I know there are a lot of people, you go to sell those houses, they're going to think, just like me and my son did, this house has no value to us because across the street is stuff we don't, we don't want that high transient population there because it's a whole different thing. I mean, really, it is. Everybody's said those things, and, I don't know, it just doesn't seem right or fair to change that when people are making decisions, important decisions. I mean, everybody in this room knows, your house is pretty much the biggest investment you make. I mean, you know, hopefully, you're investing, and the stock market's doing good, but bottom line, it's the biggest investment you make. So it just isn't, doesn't seem right or fair to change this zoning after we've already made a big decision based on the way things are. So I'm just asking that you disapprove the change and leave things the way they are so that our property values stay the same.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
If there are any folks out in the hall that wish to speak, there's time for you. We're good out there? Okay, last chance.
I'll talk.
Oh, I knew I'd get somebody.
I'm one of the seniors that live in the condos that Tom was talking about. I'm Sue Tormey, and I live at 2571 Green Leaf Drive. I can't think of any good reason to do this, but the one thing that really concerns me is the apartments right next to the houses. I like quiet. I think people like quiet. And I just happened to read one of the reviews from Wexford on the Green right across the street, and this is what the guy said. Best place I've ever rented from. The staff knew me and my dog. So there's also going to be dogs and cats and everything else that's going to come with these apartments. Always events going on, like pool parties, food truck rallies, and garage sales. That's the review from the guy loving Wexford on the Green. That's going to be the same type of client that's going to be patronizing the apartments. And I'm just not for noise. I'd like to have quiet. I'm older now, and I just am not for it. So I oppose it for the safety, the cost of maintaining the roads, the impact on the schools, the traffic is horrendous already, and there's going to be an accident, I know, happening, especially with all this old people out there driving now, so. But anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I don't want apartments. Single-family housing, I think, is fine, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Al Cummings. My address is 2669 Greenside Drive, and I live in a condo complex which is immediately west of where we're talking about. I've lived there since 190, sorry, 2001. Yeah, 19, 2001, and I've walked all that area long before it was developed. So I watched it work through to where it is now. I can't dispute anything that has been said here tonight. My concern would be, I really think we do have, we're starting to have a significant congestion problem in certain areas of Beaver Creek, and I don't know why we would want to add to that. The roadway there on New Germany Trebine Road, I just can't really envision a safe entry/exit there because, first of all, it's not level. It's on a little bit of grade there, and, you know, you guys ought to just drive that sometime in the morning, or late in the day, or any time of the day, actually. We just have great amount of traffic on New Germany Trebine Road now, and it is going to get increasingly congested when Beaver Valley is developed. So I know there's been a lot of emotion here tonight, but there's been a hell of a lot of good facts, and this group has done their homework, and I think they're locked in, and I think you'd be wise to kind of look at this thing as a challenge to get done. Thank you.
Last chance. Anyone out in the hall want to speak?
I'm retired Air Force. Mike, I recognize you from the headquarters as well. It's been a few years since that time. When I came here originally, we picked Beaver Creek out of a lot of different cities that were available to us. And we picked it for a lot of the reasons that you've already heard. We picked it because it has great schools. We picked it because it was safe. We picked it because it was close to the base. A lot of those things. But specifically, we picked Beaver Creek in the neighborhood that we lived in because of the community that we have there. I can tell you that it's a great community. The low density makes it what it is. And interestingly, in this group of people, you haven't heard a single representative say, you know what, we want more apartments in here. Not a single one. And I appreciate all the hard work that this entire crew has put in. So for 17 years, we've lived there. We were one of the original owners. We moved there in 2003. Liked it so well, we bought a second house in the neighborhood, moved down the street, truly enjoy the neighborhood. And I can tell you that saturation, traffic, the issues that you've heard are a significant concern from both a safety perspective and also just from a quality of life perspective. It's quiet there. We like it because it's quiet there, and that's really one of the main reasons that people buy in that community. One of the things that also hasn't really been emphasized, and is a planning commission, I believe should be factored in, is the aesthetics of the golf course. It's one of the most beautiful holes on the course, number six, out there. It's absolutely gorgeous, which is one of the reasons that we picked to live on that particular street. And we knew all along, just like you've heard others say, that there is the potential of development there. Knew that all along. No problem with the low-density houses, just like the ones that all of us live in. It's the greater density that we're against, and really, there's no good reason to change that density pattern right now. And I agree with the other comments. It's a slippery slope. Once you make that decision to say, hey, we're going to go ahead and have that load or that medium-density housing in that area, there's lots of platitudes. Oh, they're going to be great-looking. Oh, they're, you know, we're going to do it so it's aesthetically pleasing. But the fact of the matter is, you really lose control of that once that decision is made to go medium-density. So I would encourage you, just like all of the people that you've heard tonight, to say no to the change in zoning in that particular area. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Sometimes, if you're really, really quiet, somebody will break the silence. Last chance. Anybody? I said, we hear everybody want to be heard. Nobody out in the hall, okay? Close the public hearing, and I won't stick our new guy first. So I'll start on my right. Yes. Oh, yes, that's right, written input. We had a lot. It was tired of waiting.
The planning commissioners did receive a copy. The list that I put together, I compiled a list of 91 letters. All of them were against, and on the screen, it shows the list of names and the addresses
We will not be reading those letters this evening. I think we've had plenty of input. So now I will start to my right.
Randy, can you pull up your presentation? You had a slide that listed all the different densities around the property. Yeah. So the Woodlands at Canterbury is at 3.09, right?
Correct.
So is that low-density or medium?
Our definition of medium-density is, well, low-density is 3-point dwelling units an acre or lower, so medium-density is less than six, so that's considered a medium-density residential there.
So if the applicant wanted to put in like homes in this area, we would have to go ahead and zone that medium to maintain that, if we wanted the same 3.09 density?
Right now, the area is zoned for single-family homes at three dwelling units an acre.
Yeah.
At the time, when it was rezoned, I believe they had a different definition of what's medium-density, what's low-density. I think medium-density, in 91 plan, it was, well, low-density was up to four dwelling units an acre in 1991, and then I think medium-density was up to eight, and then high was above eight. There was no cap. So this was low-density when it was rezoned, but now the definition of low-density is different.
Okay. That answered that question. Second question, have we had, or have you had discussions with the applicant? Is he open to doing two different plans?
I just want to point, there's no technical, we don't have an application. We got a letter and a concept plan showing what they were thinking they want to do, and as I stated in my staff report, if they were, if they brought that concept forward at the rezoning phase, I would not recommend approval of the rezoning. That concept plan is, that was just an initial idea, just to get something in front of us. But again, I wouldn't recommend approval of that particular concept plan the way that they have it laid out.
Okay. It's all my questions.
Wake up. Your turn.
All right. This is going to be an odd one for me. I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay.
I also don't have any questions, but I do have just a few statements. So last meeting, it was presented to us as the commission to have this conversation. We here don't have anything to do with this. We here, just as you here, we listen and we decide. You know, that is our job. We're doing our civic duty. We're volunteers, and we are part of Beaver Creek as well. So I just want you to understand that we hear you and we're part of the same community. So, I know, there wasn't, I wouldn't, no veiled threats. There's no long-term ulterior motives. We're here just doing our service. So that's it for me.
Okay. Drew?
Well, thank you. As Mr. Self said, it's my first meeting, and I've got to say, you're the most informed community that I've seen at a meeting so far, so thank you for that. I hope everybody is as well-informed as you guys. I do have some questions for staff, though. A lot of the concerns that were brought up are traffic and schools, and I know that schools cannot be a determining factor in our decision, but what historically has the community seen in the difference in traffic and the difference in school congestion between multifamily and single-family homes?
Well, what I could tell you, the number, the way the engineering traffic, their manual, I think, is like the eighth edition. I referenced it in the staff report. The trips per day for a single-family home is five and a half on average, and the trip, no, I'm sorry, for a multifamily home is five and a half per dwelling unit, and for a single-family home, it's around nine, I think. So on a unit-by-unit calculation, if you were just apples and apples...
apples, I mean, if you're looking one unit and one unit, you know, there's quite a bit more traffics per day on a single-family home than a multifamily home. That's the engineering manual. I mean, that's not, we didn't sit out on the road and calculate that from a Beaver Creek standpoint. It's just, we go with what, you know, the guidelines are there. And for schools, you know, the numbers, I looked at, you know, the National Association of Home Builders, and they show that on new construction, the number of students per unit for a multifamily is much less than what it is for a single-family unit, per unit. And I've got those numbers if you need those.
Thank you. And then, I've got a couple more, sorry. But the, I just want to make sure that I fully understand. The, I know Mr. Emerling came up and was talking about, he showed a slide, actually, where he had plotted the proposed buildings. And I know that we're not at the site plan phase, we're not even at the zoning phase yet. But I want to understand, because in the meeting minutes from the August meeting, when the developer came, he said that they intended to put, they wanted to switch to a high, medium-density so they can put more units on the north side and have less at the south to preserve the woodlands down there. But on the site plan that Mr. Emerling put up, they, it was not sorted that way or distributed that way. Is there, is there something that I've not seen yet from the developer?
No, the, that conversation, that conversation came from when I spoke with him about that. I said, you know, we're not going to recommend approval of what you have here in front of you. That it doesn't make sense to have multifamily spread out equally throughout the site. That, that concept plan was already, that was after, actually, we had already submitted to planning commission, but we hadn't presented to them yet. But I said, listen, you know, we're not going to recommend approval of any rezoning unless you change this. So they just haven't gotten, they haven't gotten an updated plan. But we're still at the conceptual stage, the broad stroke stage of land use plan. They would have to come up with a different concept plan if this got to a rezoning phase. And the concept planning is just that, it's conceptual. It doesn't necessarily show where roads are going to be laid out or things like that. But it just shows the general ideas of what look, and it could just be a bubble diagram showing this is where they would have X dwelling number units per acre, and this is where they have, you know, Y dwelling number units per acre.
Okay. And then, that kind of leads to my last question. The, so even if approved, even if we amend the land use plan, or recommend to amend the land use plan, and council goes with that, it does not mean that they're approved to build on these sites.
No. Again, this would be the first of eight public hearings.
Okay.
Before they could ever build anything that's not, that isn't what's allowed out there now in terms of zoning regulations.
Okay. So, and not to put words in your mouth, but was staff's rationale on recommending approval, was that just so that we can have an opportunity for all sides to be heard? From the developer's side, from the resident's side? What was the rationale for recommending?
You know, we wanted to bring this out, you know, to the public and get all the input out here. And from a recommendation standpoint, you know, we're recommending approval based on if the rezoning, that you can consolidate that higher density up near New Germany Trebine and lower density near the single-family residential area to the south.
Good. Thank you.
That's it?
My turn. Help me out here. I don't want to misspeak because you're the pro on this. But it's my understanding that regardless of whether it's zoning or a site plan or whatever, any kind of a development, a city cannot disapprove that based on either traffic, school, the, what will happen with the schools or with the road net. Is that correct?
That's not how we would do it here. I mean, that's, we don't, it's certainly not something that you don't think about, but it's not, it's not a basis for decision.
Right. Okay. And the, help me out here, too. We're talking about, and I'm just foot-stomping this again, we're talking about amending the land use plan. This has nothing to do with zoning, with the PUD, or with a specific site plan for this property.
Correct.
This is the first step of many-
This wouldn't change, this wouldn't change the zoning of the property.
Okay. And just to, just to try to answer a few of the questions that I heard. First of all, Mr. Emerling, you're the first guy that's ever quoted me in all the years I've been on planning commission. So I'm glad I'm careful about what I say. But I mean what I say when I say it. I just wanted to let you all know that the reason we are hearing this is because the property owner has made a request. It would be the same as if you wanted to build a house on your lot, and it didn't meet the setback requirements, and you would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a permission to move your house seven feet from the property line instead of 10. Any property owner has the right to ask for a property to be rezoned, to have it, to have an amendment to the land use plan for different use. That's your right as a property owner. And if my memory serves me, the Constitution says you can do that. So that's why we're here. It has nothing to do with whether we as a planning commission are in favor or against it, or whether staff is in favor or against it. But we are required by law and by the Constitution to hear a property owner's request. As, just as a couple of points, could you put up the slide that shows the surrounding properties with what they are currently zoned? Okay. If you notice, there are several multifamily developments around this property already. So it's not quite the same as Mr. Emerling quoting me on the parcel next to, or near the intersection of Shaker Town and Patterson Road, sorry, Grange Hall and Shaker Town, because that was pretty much surrounded by single-family, existing single-family. The, and also, as I'm sure you all are aware, because you did your homework, the front part of this parcel is already noted for up to six units per acre. It's the back part that is the lower density. So a developer can take those front, is that a total of six acres if you include the, that out parcel?
No, that out.
G and the out parcel next to it?
No, the 5.86 acres is just G. There's three acres, but they're not in the city.
Okay.
They're in the town. So the applicant has talked about annexing those.
But that's still speculative right now.
Yeah, that's, from our perspective, that's not that.
So the slightly less than six acres in the front, they would be, as it stands right now with the land use plan, they could come in with up to 36 units in there.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I'm speaking correctly here. I've got notes all over this page. Oh, one other thing, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, when regardless of where the prop, where a property is developed, if you're taking raw land and you are developing it, whether it be residential, commercial, or whatever, you are, you are not permitted to exacerbate the drainage off of that property. In other words, once the development is done, the drainage from that property cannot exceed the drainage of the raw land. So the citizen who is concerned about the flooding over there off of Beaver Valley Road, it couldn't be made any worse. It has been our experience, and, tell me if I'm wrong, Randy.
No, you're correct.
It's been our experience that when a piece of raw land is developed, it usually improves the drainage off that property because the developer doesn't want to get dinged for flooding somebody's backyard.
They don't want to do the pond twice, basically.
Right. Basically. And we've had a couple of situations where the developer didn't do due diligence, and they had to come back and do it, and it was a whole lot more expensive the second time around. So regardless of how this property develops, whatever is developed there, there can't be any increase in the drainage off the property than is there now.
What it is, is it's an increase in flow rate. So-
Correct.
They have to detain any extra stormwater runoff on-site and let it drain out at the same rate as whatever's draining out now.
Correct.
So.
And that, the pond that is just slightly off of this property, is that a detention pond for this development?
Yes.
Not only this development, but all the golf course south of the-
I'm sure the golf court course and the surrounding residential isn't the only thing draining into that pond.
Right.
But that, it is a pond for the, I mean, there's other ponds for the golf course as well.
And I know you're not the city engineer, but if my memory serves me, everything north of New Germany Trebine actually drains to the north, not to the south. It doesn't drain under New Germany Trebine.
I believe New Germany Trebine's the high point.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
That's why it's so scary to drive on it. Because it runs along the ridge line.
You're at the top peaks of those villas.
Okay. So, thanks, Randy. I think that's all I've got. And I think that's all I've got. Gentlemen, second helping. We all done? Okay. I want a motion, please.
Well, because I don't think any of my other commissioners are going to do it.
I can't. I'm the chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to disapprove PC 20-10.
Okay. I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a second. And remember, gentlemen, a vote, a yes vote means to disapprove. Just want to make sure you got it all right. Okay. Last chance for comments. Read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. And we are going to take a little break. And we're back with a somewhat less contentious decision item. Go ahead. Read away.
This is case number PC 20-9. It's in Azra. On an application filed by James Connell, 2650 Somerset Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431, the applicant requested administrative site plan review and approval in Azra for 2.04 acres of land to construct a 12,000-square-foot office lab addition to an existing building located at 4085 Executive Drive. The property is further described as Book Two, Page Six, Parcel Twenty on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I have lost my agenda. This isn't a public hearing, is it?
It is a public hearing.
It is a public, oh, I am so sorry. Thank you. Okay, do we have an applicant here? Ah, thank you. Step right on up. We'll hear from our applicant, then we'll hear from our staff report, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
My name is Jim Connell. 3650 Somerset Drive, Beaver Creek. What would you like to hear?
What would you like to tell us?
After that last meeting you just had. Do you want to add on to the back of the building? It's a 12,000-square-foot building now, so it basically doubled the size, a little bit more than double the parking lot. The pad was built previously, and the, basically, the design was preset before. So we're just finishing out what they had intended in 2008. And that's about it.
Okay, that's fine. Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. The applicant is requesting administrative site plan review and approval to allow for the construction of an approximately 12,000-square-foot addition onto the existing building located at 4085 Executive Drive. The property originally, when this first structure was built, was not within a planned development area. And then, in one of our more recent land use plan updates, we actually added the PDA to a lot of the research park as well as the Apple Valley Business Park. This gives us a little bit of extra review power to make sure that developments are meeting the standards of the city of Beaver Creek. So the original building was constructed in 2007. And as I stated, it did not go through the Azra process. With this addition, because it's such a significant addition, essentially doubling the size of the building, it did trigger that Azra review. So they will go through one planning commission meeting, and then with that recommendation, move on to city council for a final decision. So the property is approximately two acres, and it's located on the south side of Executive Drive within the Apple Valley Business District. As I stated, the building was constructed in 2007. The property is currently zoned RP1, which is Research Park, and will remain as such. This is not a rezoning. And an office and a research lab are permitted uses within the RP1 zoning district. As far as the new building design goes, so the applicant is essentially just doubling the size, extending the building back from the front. And it's going to be comprised entirely of brick. It's going to be a red brick that matches the brick that's used on the front. They aren't going to use this, the white brick. They're just going to extend back with the red. And what they're doing, I think I have a floor plan, is almost mirroring what they have now. So they're essentially doubling the number of office spaces that they have, and then also doubling the amount of actual lab area that they have as well. Also with this, they are expanding their parking lot. Currently, our zoning code doesn't have a specific requirement for research labs. So what we did is, we just took a look at the number of offices that they have, and then the number of employees that they are planning on having at max build-out, and then went off of that for parking. So they are, they are providing with the new parking lot, a total of 44 parking spaces and two handicap-accessible spaces. And actually, at their max build-out, they're only going to have 25 employees total. So we're comfortable with the amount of parking that they're proposing. And then if a future user were to come in, there's still going to be an adequate amount of parking for that as well. Just a quick look at the elevations. So the additional, the building addition at the back, it's going to be approximately 20 feet tall, which is just slightly taller, 1.3 feet taller than the existing building at its highest point. And it's just going to have two additional bay doors. I believe this is a future bay door that could come at a later date. And then as far as landscaping goes, I don't think I included the landscape plan, but they're going to add additional landscaping in the new parking islands that they're putting in. They're moving some of the existing trees that have to be taken out. They're going to add some new trees. So they will meet all of our landscape requirements. And then also, we did add a condition of approval that requires that any of their mechanical equipment, because their research lab, they have a lot more mechanical equipment outside than you might normally see in an office building. We want to make sure that all of that does get screened. So I know that there's some out there now that isn't. And so they're actually going to supplement the landscaping to screen some of that existing as well to make sure that they are meeting our requirements. So staff is recommending approval of this Azra request with the 11 conditions in the attached resolution. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you. You answered all my questions. Thank. This is a public hearing, so I will ask if anyone here wishes to speak in favor, against, or simply ask questions.
Thank you. Brent Huntsman, 1560 Kingsway Drive in Xenia. I'm also president and owner of Tarran Corporation directly across the street from the applicant. The only question I have is, are there going to be any outside apertures that were previously with the building? They had some very large stovepipe tank- They had some very large stovepipe tanks outside that had material in them. They've taken down two of them, and I believe there's one gas tank, I'm, I'm assuming it's CO2 or nitrogen or something that's there. Will they be building additional tanks outside this new addition?
Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Might as well answer it while you're, why not? Go ahead.
Okay, the nitrogen tank was from the previous occupant, that's probably going to stay, I don't know if they're going to use it or not, but it'll probably stay. It's in a enclosure, it's just taller than the enclosure. As far as I know, the objectionable thing that was sticking through the roof is gone, I believe, and I don't know of any other outside equipment that's going to be installed other than a new gas meter and maybe an antenna, so I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you, thanks for clearing that up. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, I'm just going to open this up generally. Gentlemen, questions?
I just have one. So, are the, sorry, staff, are, are the tanks technically mechanical fixtures that would require screening?
Yeah, so the, the tank that's, so, when the building was built originally, we didn't get to go through this process, so they, they put up this tank, and there it was. So, they did, they screened it, but it does project above the, it's, it's in an enclosure, almost like a dumpster enclosure. If they were to build anything in the future, then yes, absolutely, we would make sure that, that it would be screened. I mean, I'm not, I think the, the original point of contention is when the building was built, they put this thing on the roof that kind of looked like a big rocket, and, and the neighbors in all the offices were not happy. So, this, the ASRA process helps with that, it gives us that additional level of review where we can, you know, mitigate those kinds of issues and maybe come to some sort of agreement to, to put it in a less obtrusive place or to have additional screening.
I do have one question, any concerns with impervious surface in this one?
Nope, we actually, our engineer, for the first time ever, didn't have any comments, so he's, he's, he's good with everything.
Good enough for me, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, he's, he's happy with the drainage, they have the pond that's just to the southwest there, and, yeah, I was, I was surprised, I actually went down and double-checked with him, because I was like, where's, where are your comments? So, yeah.
Gotcha, and then just one last question on the equipment enclosure. I know sometimes these are put in enclosures because of potential for explosion and other things, and I noticed that it was put away from the original parking lot, at least to the backside of it, and now you're going to be putting cars, is there any, any concern about parking cars that close? And I know with nitrogen, typically you don't have an explosion risk, you have more of an implosion risk.
I mean, that may, that may be a question to ask our fire department.
Okay, maybe the, any concerns there? All right, you guys are awesome, I'm good, thank you.
Don't run off, I do have one question.
Sure.
Is that a, a detention or retention pond at the very back?
It is a detention pond, it's dry.
Okay, it just slows it down.
Yeah.
Now, that's not there now, is it?
The pond is, I believe it's, it's here, right?
It's there.
Yeah.
I walked it.
Yeah, it's not here, no, this isn't, this is the area where the addition's going.
Okay, that's what I thought, it's, it's actually off-site, but it serves several properties.
The entire business, the entire Apple Valley Business District, yeah.
Right, yeah, I seem to recall when, when we approved that a long time ago, it was, it served several different parcels.
Based, yeah, based on the fact that we didn't get comments from engineering, I'm assuming that the, the ponds are sized for the entire business district to be built out.
One to the right.
Yeah, there's one to the right, too.
Yep, yep, okay, good. Gentlemen, further questions? Okay, I need, if you have more, no more questions, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have moved to approve PC 20-9 ASRA with the attached 11 conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, a second.
And I have a second. Why don't we be formal and read the roll.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes, motion carries five zero, we're pleased as punch to see another Beaver Creek business expanding, that's super. One more item, gentlemen, and that is a final subdivision for the woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is a request for a final subdivision for the woods, Section Seven. This is actually the last section of the woods, so we're, we're excited about that, it's been 25 years. So, this, the applicant is requesting approval of final subdivision to divide, subdivide 4.8 acres into 18 lots that will comprise Section Seven of the woods. So, the original site plan for Section Six of the woods was approved in 1999 and contained 40, originally contained 40 buildable lots. The applicant came to Planning Commission in 2018 and actually split Section Six into two separate sections, so it's Section Six and, so it's now Section Six and Seven, so this was, so this is now Section Six just to the north, and then this is Section Seven. And so this, and when they did that, they actually reduced the, the total number of lots, and actually increased the size of, of the existing lots, so we did have a reduction. So, this request today for Section Seven is for the remaining 18 lots. So, it is a total of 18, so this is separated into two pages, so it's a little bit confusing, but, so it's, it's these in, in the darker part here, and then here's the main, the main portion of it. So, it's actually 18 lots total, but it's 16 buildable lots. So, one of the lots is for the detention area, and then the last lot is actually the road. The woods is all private, so all those are private streets, so that it actually gets designated an actual lot number as well, because it is privately maintained. All of the lots are required to pay a per-lot impact fee because they are within the impact fee district, and then also we'll have to pay park fees as well. We did route this out to all of the area agencies, they all recommended approval, or approval with conditions, with no major issues, and staff is also recommending approval with the five conditions in the attached recommendation, and I can answer any questions you have right now.
Thank you. Questions, gentlemen? Really been 25 years?
25 years, yeah.
Holy cow. This was our first less-than-half-acre lot development in Beaver Creek, and it was very controversial when it, when it first hit, but it's proved to be quite successful.
Yes.
So, questions, gentlemen? Comments? Okay, I want a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 20-8 with the five conditions.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Second, okay. Anything else of the good of the order? Okay, well, do a roll call.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Height.
Yes.
Mr. Loftus.
Yes.
Mr. Self.
Yes, motion carries five zero. We are fresh out of agenda items, so I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the September meeting of the Beaver Creek Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a second, and we are at exactly 8:30.